To thank those that have been waiting patiently for us, we had a study session at the TPEC and there was more people there than at a K-State football game this year, so it took us a while to get out and to get here. So with that, we've called the meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. We will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those that are able please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of words and proclamations today.
Item 3.1, the month of September 2020, as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month in the city of Salina, Amanda Otto, CEO with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, will read the proclamation. Good afternoon. Whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters of Salina enables life-changing mentoring relationships to ignite the power and promise of youth in our community. And whereas the mentoring model of Big Brothers Big Sisters is a proven effective strategy that helps youth by matching them with a caring, responsible adult role model who can provide guidance, direction, and build their confidence. And whereas mentoring strengthens our local economic and social well-being by helping change the course of at-risk youth lives, helping young people fulfill their potential, encouraging healthy family relationships, and promoting more vibrant communities. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters has been making an impact on the lives of young people in Celine County since 1968 by partnering with parents and guardians, volunteers, and others in the community to help youth achieve higher aspirations, greater confidence, better relationships, avoidance of risky behavior, and educational success. And whereas research has shown that youth engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration, and avoid delinquent behavior. And whereas many of Salina's youth are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will take more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in the life of a child. And whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community. And whereas residents of this community are making a profound difference in the lives of our youth by serving as mentors or supporting our mentoring programs. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Salina's youth through mentoring. And now therefore I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month. I encourage everyone to visit bbbsalina.org and learn more about how to get involved in igniting the potential of youth in our community.
Thank you Amanda. I know September is about over, but do we have, do you have any upcoming events?
We do, hopefully. In November on the 21st, which will kick off the downtown Christmas activities, we'll do the Frosty Fun Runs, hopefully in person. If not, Plan B is to do that virtually, so.
I prefer virtually myself, and nobody knows.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know what month was Big Brothers Big Sisters Month because Big Brothers may be one of the most active organizations we have in Celine County, and it seems like you have something going on all the time, so.
Yes, we try to.
So I have a proclamation for you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Item 3.2, the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week in the city of Salina, Melissa Stouchlick, Regent of the Local Daughters of the American Revolution, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the 1787 Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of this great country designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Michael L. Hoppick as Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereunto assigned, set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina to be affixed as 21st day of September in the year of our Lord 2020. Signed, Michael Hoppick.
Thank you. And do you have any, anything scheduled for?
The 17th, there were bells chimed at 4:00 PM. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not in the schools anymore.
Yeah.
So a lot of things that we would have done in public have been set aside, but hopefully next year we'll do a little bit better on that.
It's changed a lot of our lives, so I have a proclamation for you, so. Okay, with that, we come to the Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum's a chance for individuals to come forth if they have something they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda. We please ask that you give your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Do we have anyone?
Council, can you rethink?
Your name, please.
Dalton McDowell.
Thank you.
Council, can you rethink your mask policy? If you look, North, or South Dakota Governor Kristi Noem never enacted any of this that Kansas Governor did or what you guys have done, and they've had far less COVID-19 outbreak cases. They even had the biggest bikers rally in South Dakota, no issues. Get rid of these masks. This is a, this is just a political stunt.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Miranda Bachmann. I just wanted to kind of reiterate and follow up.
You might pull the microphone down so we can hear you a little better.
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry, the masks.
Thank you.
I just kind of wanted to reiterate and follow up with the 1033 program and the Sunflower Coalition's proposal. I support banning the 1033 program. I would like to point out that private funds are obtained and used from the police department, and I really think that if this was, that if we needed military weapons, or if something was to happen in the future where we wanted to reassess the 1033 program, it could be done as like a public, as a public entity instead of, instead of from the city maybe. I feel like that there would be other ways to go around, and I understand that you'd have to buy the military weapons at the full price, but I think that it would be better to buy them at the full price and new instead of used and old from the surplus. So I just kind of wanted to follow through on that, and then not to mention the fact that it takes them a long time to deploy the AVC. And so I think that if they needed to get one, they would be able to get one from Topeka or some of these other cities around here in just amount, in just about the same amount of time as it takes to get the approval and the car deployed. Also, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, that these meetings, like the one today, you know, just the people that were there, it shows that it's not, that it's not open to the people who it needs to be open to, in my opinion. And the only reason that I was able to come is because I was able to thenggle some things with my schedule, but I think most people obviously work during the day, and I think that in future forums, hopefully we do have a second public forum. Maybe we could do something like in the evenings, maybe on, who knows, different weekdays, whatever. I know that it imposes schedules, and I know that it's hard, and I know you guys are elected officials and don't get paid much at all, but I just, I would appreciate the opportunity to address people that need, that need addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Darren Henderson. I live at 4326 Turner Lane here in Salina. Been here for about seven years, and I was watching the forum earlier online, and based off what the lady just said, I run a company here in town. I got about 100 employees. And on a topic that's as important as what we're talking about today, I encouraged anybody and everybody at the company to come up here or go to that forum to speak because that's what our rights entitle us to do. So I also have a specific instance that happened to me. Seven years I've moved here to Salina. Any of you guys that know, Paul Mye happened to be with me that day. And I was actually, as you can tell, I'm a Caucasian, and I was pulled over by the Salina Police Department, a little frustrated at the time.
Good afternoon. Whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters of Salina enables life-changing mentoring relationships to ignite the power and promise of youth in our community. And whereas the mentoring model of Big Brothers Big Sisters is a proven effective strategy that helps youth by matching them with a caring, responsible adult role model who can provide guidance, direction, and build their confidence. And whereas mentoring strengthens our local economic and social well-being by helping change the course of at-risk youth lives, helping young people fulfill their potential, encouraging healthy family relationships, and promoting more vibrant communities. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters has been making an impact on the lives of young people in Saline County since 1968 by partnering with parents and guardians, volunteers, and others in the community to help youth achieve higher aspirations, greater confidence, better relationships, avoidance of risky behavior, and educational success. And whereas research has shown that youth engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration, and avoid delinquent behavior. And whereas many of Salina's youth are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will take more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in the life of a child. And whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community. And whereas residents of this community are making a profound difference in the lives of our youth by serving as mentors or supporting our mentoring programs. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Salina's youth through mentoring. And now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month. I encourage everyone to visit bbbsalina.org and learn more about how to get involved in igniting the potential of youth in our community.
Thank you, Amanda. I know September is about over, but do we have, do you have any upcoming events?
We do, hopefully. In November, on the 21st, which will kick off the downtown Christmas activities, we'll do the Frosty Fun Runs, hopefully in person. If not, Plan B is to do that virtually, so.
I prefer virtually myself, and nobody knows. Well, I didn't know what month was Big Brothers Big Sisters Month because Big Brothers may be one of the most active organizations we have in Saline County, and it seems like you have something going on all the time, so.
Yes, we try to.
So I have a proclamation for you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Item 3.2, the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020, is Constitution Week in the city of Salina. Melissa Stouchlick, Regent of the Local Daughters of the American Revolution, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the 1787 Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of this great country designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Michael L. Hoppick, as Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina to be affixed as 21st day of September in the year of our Lord 2020. Signed, Michael Hoppick.
Thank you. And do you have any, anything scheduled for?
The 17th, there were bells chimed at 4:00 PM. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not in the schools anymore. A lot of things that we would have done in public have been set aside, but hopefully next year we'll do a little bit better on that.
It's changed a lot of our lives, so I have a proclamation for you, so. Okay, with that, we come to the Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum's a chance for individuals to come forth if they have something they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda. We please ask that you give your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Do we have anyone?
Counsel, can you rethink?
Your name, please.
Dalton McDowell.
Thank you.
Counsel, can you rethink your mask policy? If you look, North, or South Dakota Governor Kristi Noem never enacted any of this that Kansas Governor did or what you guys have done, and they've had far less COVID-19 outbreak cases. They even had the biggest bikers rally in South Dakota, no issues. Get rid of these masks. This is a, this is just a political stunt.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
Miranda Bachman. I just wanted to kind of reiterate and follow up.
Pull the microphone down so we can hear you a little better.
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry, the mask.
Thank you.
I just kind of wanted to reiterate and follow up with the 1033 program and the Sunflower Coalition's proposal. I support banning the 1033 program. I would like to point out that private funds are, are obtained and used from the police department, and I really think that if this was, that if we needed military weapons, or if something was to happen in the future where we wanted to reassess the 1033 program, it could be done as like a public, as a public entity instead of, instead of from the city, maybe. I feel like that there would be other ways to go around, and I understand that you'd have to buy the military weapons at the full price, but I think that it would be better to buy them at the full price and new instead of used and old from the surplus. So I just kind of wanted to follow through on that, and then not to mention the fact that it takes them a long time to deploy the AVC. And so I think that if they needed to get one, they would be able to get one from Topeka or some of these other cities around here in just amount, in just about the same amount of time as it takes to get the approval and the car deployed. Also, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, that these meetings, like the one today, you know, just the people that were there, it shows that it's not, that it's not open to the people who it needs to be open to, in my opinion, and the only reason that I was able to come is because I was able to thinagle some things with my schedule. But I think most people obviously work during the day, and I think that in future forums, hopefully, we do have a second public forum. Maybe we could do something like in the evenings, maybe on, who knows, different weekdays, whatever. I know that it imposes schedules, and I know that it's hard, and I know you guys are elected officials and don't get paid much at all, but I just, I would appreciate the opportunity to address people that need, that need addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Darren Henderson. I live at 4326 Turner Lane here in Salina. Been here for about seven years, and I was watching the forum earlier online, and based off what the lady just said, I run a company here in town. I got about 100 employees, and on a topic that's as important as what we're talking about today, I encouraged anybody and everybody at the company to come up here or go to that forum to speak because that's what our rights entitle us to do. So I also have a, a specific instance that happened to me. Seven years I've moved here to Salina, any of you guys that know, Paul Mye happened to be with me that day. And I was actually, as you can tell, I'm a, I'm a Caucasian, and I was pulled over by the Salina Police Department. A little frustrated at the time, but I want to tell you something. I'm glad those guys are out there doing what they're doing after 14 years in the military. Served in Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Had we not have the equipment and stuff that we needed to be able to do the things that we needed to do, it would be the same thing as sending these guys out there in harm's way to protect us as citizens without having the things that they needed every day. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 14, 2020.
Do I have a motion, or do we have any additions or deletions?
I move to approve the minutes of September 14, 2020.
Second.
Motion second, approve the minutes for September 14. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Leads us to administration.
Item 7.1, Saline County Jail Presentation.
Commissioners, my blue sheet was real brief. The county administrator approached me about the opportunity to present to you the jail project. We would typically do something like that in study session, but given our study session schedule and the timing of the ballot initiative, probably merited going ahead and putting it on your regular agenda. So between the sheriff and the county administrator, they have a presentation they'd like to make on the upcoming jail project that'll be on the upcoming ballot. I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. The Saline County Jail project is something that we've been working on for quite some time. A little bit about the current county jail is built in 1962, the sheriff's office was, and in 1995, we had an addition that added 152 more beds. We kept 40 beds in the old facility, and unfortunately, since 2010, we've had more inmates and bed space in the county jail. This is just a quick graph that goes back to the year 2000 that gives the average daily population in the Saline County jail, and you can, it's kind of hard to see, but the second line down is 200 beds, so really, any, any time in that timeline that's past 200 or years where the average daily population was past 200, and since 2010, we have been, and we've never fallen below that 192 beds in any of the last 10 years. The red lines just indicate the most inmates we had in jail in any of those, 2014 on. Reason that we don't have the prior is we had a software update that allowed us to capture this information. There's always inmates coming in and out of the jail, so it's a little hard to capture how many are in at one point, but in 16, 17, and 18, we passed 300 inmates in our county jail. Were in custody of the sheriff. One thing that happened is in 2011, in the fall of 2011, we'd been dealing with a lot of fights. We'd had a lot of turnover in the jail, and it forced us to start contract housing inmates outside. For the safety of the officers and the inmates that are in custody. So we started, like I say, in October of 2011, housing inmates outside. You can kind of see, I'm not going to go through every number, but as the population has grown, the number of inmates that are housed outside has grown along with it. And we, at the high point, we had almost 95 inmates out, and that's an average. At times, we're over 100, and at times it was lower, but that's the average through the years. Thing that has grown along with that is the number of trips that we've had to take inmates back and forth because we don't, unfortunately, we don't just take them to the county jail and drop them off and leave them there. They have doctor's appointments. They have appointments with the court that we have to bring them back. They have motions and hearings, and so unless they were sentenced to county jail, and in that lucky case that we have an inmate that's sentenced to 90 days, and we could just send them there and leave them for 90 days and bring them back, that'd be the ideal situation, but we really don't have a lot of inmates that are in that situation. This is kind of the bottom line of what this has cost us, and this is up through the end of 2019. The county spent 6.228 million in contract housing costs, and I included the trip costs in there. The thing about the contract housing cost, all that money that we sent, that's all gone to these other counties we contracted with, Washington County, Cloud County, lot of Ottawa County, McPherson, Butler, we've got inmates in Rice County. So we're, and we've got contracts with several other counties that we've used when the population's been up. It's been down a little bit this last year, which allowed us to keep them a little closer. That, that price is $35 a day per inmate. It was 30 when we first started doing this. That price is 35. That's not set in statute. There's nothing that requires these jails to take those inmates. So what happened in 2017, when we hired, we ended up having to look for another housing jail. We were paying 30, they wanted 35. I didn't have any choice but to pay them 35, and as soon as the other counties heard I was paying them 35, all the rest of them wanted 35. So it's not, this is not a controlled thing. If they, if they told me tomorrow they wanted 50, I don't think we have much option other than pay them 50 or start looking farther out. I've got a contract with Ford County. I hope I don't get to the point where we have to start hauling inmates to Ford County because that drives that trip expense up, and it's a major problem for us. Some of these stats I've already told you, but they're on the sheets that were handed out. One of the things that I want to touch on is that the inmate rehabilitation goals, we want to, the county jail's not set up to be a rehabilitation center or anything, but we want to give them some mental health services and some basic programming services that will help them when they hit the community. Because if we have inmates in jail that are just coming in, going out, coming in, going out, and we can't provide them at least some sort of, some structure and some programming to help them with some life skills and a place maybe to, to go to and get things in place with Centecan's Mental Health, and once they leave our facility, they're going to come back. And we know that because they come back, and I just pulled a day, a little about a year and a half ago, went through the numbers of everybody that's in jail, and if you'd been in jail that day, you'd been averaged 12 times. So when you think about 250 inmates that have been there an average of 12 times, that something's not working when we're just going to kick them out to bring them back into jail. I talked about the, the facility itself. We've, we have a lot of failures in the facility, a lot of issues with plumbing. In particular, the last couple of years, sewer, sewer lines have been a problem for us. Right now, I've got an eight-man cell in the old jail, which is where we're housing the females, that's closed because we had fixture collapses. And then if you can imagine that, that jail that was built in 1962, you don't go down to Lowe's or Nards and pick up a toilet. So we had to order in a special order and a toilet to be made. It's going to be eight weeks before we can get those eight beds back. And we also have a sewer line that's collapsed in the booking area right now that is to the shower where all the inmates that come in are showered before they're put in population in case they have lice or anything else that they might be carrying into them with the jail. And so we're struggling with that issue. The one part of the population that's really surprised, even the experts at the time, they built us 20 beds to hold our female inmates. Our female inmate population has went, the average is between 45 and 60. So that, that, you know, at the time when the jail was built, we were looking at eight, eight or seven or eight inmates, female inmates, and now they're 45 to 60. So they didn't really anticipate that. And the place where the females are housed, we don't have any way to classify them. The classification is simply just saying, you're a maximum inmate, you're at more risk. Well, you don't want some kid that, that made a mistake and lands himself in jail because he made some really dumb mistake in with someone who's a lifetime criminal that didn't come, wouldn't come to jail to make new friends with bad people. We want them to come to jail to get things straight with the court and hopefully get back out better than they came in. COVID-19 has been a huge impact to us because what you see in this picture is the housing is the medical unit for the jail, the whole thing. That's, that's what we have for medical. There's no housing. We don't have any medical cells. We have a, basically a small room that they can come in, they do 14-day assessments on the inmates, or if someone has a toothache, or if they have some medical need to come and see, they get in a fight and they need to get cleaned up or whatever. That's the one housing, that's the one area that we have that's for medical, but we don't have any negative airflow cells in the facility. The facility shares one air system with the entire jail, so all that air in there is just circulated through the whole facility. We don't have a real good way to keep ill inmates from each other. There's five cells in the booking area, five single cells, and with people that come in intoxicated, they tie up cells. We get people in jail with COVID, they tie up jails. We do have a positive right now in jail, and the way we found a couple of them is they were set to go to DOC, and I got them there that admissions to DOC require delays because we require testing. At one point, we had a 20-person backlog to go to DOC because of this. DOC's got the same issue in prison with COVID. They're having struggles getting inmates in, but, so when the contracted facilities are hesitant to house our inmates, so with us finding out this weekend that we have a positive for 14 days, they're not going to take any more of our inmates, and I don't blame them. That's, I wouldn't want them either. If they have, if they have someone with COVID in their jail, I don't want their inmates coming to mine either. It's just, it's really proven to be an issue for us, COVID-19 has. But the one line at the bottom, the new jail admissions that have to be segregated for 14 days, that's a huge struggle for us. And what we've had to do is take a maximum security cell, which means we have to move inmates that should be in maximum security out, put them in another portion of the housing in a different classification, and well, if me and Phil happen to come to jail on the same day, we're going to spend 14 days in the same cell together because we can't be put in with people that come in tomorrow. We can't be put in with people coming the next day. We have to be separated for 14 days and make sure that we're not positive for COVID, or not showing any symptoms. What have we done so far with the jail? And when it went over in 2010, and in 2011, we contacted the National Institute of Corrections to do a criminal justice system review. They had an expert come in, looked through our system, and give us some recommendations. We also had Kansas Wesleyan University did a survey of what the people's, the population's thoughts were on the jail and what should be done. At their recommendation, we hired a consultant to complete a needs assessment, 2012. One thing that came out of that needs assessment was Drug Court was established in 2013. 2014, we did put the jail, expansion to the jail on the ballot, which failed. That was a whole criminal justice complex, included county attorney's office and community corrections and everything else. Once it failed, to be honest, the sheriff at the time had had all of this. He could take, you know, I was the, I was the corrections captain when we went through all this. He'd had all of it that he could, he wasn't going to try anymore to try and fix this. He just kind of finished out his term, but it was a, it was kind of a letdown for him. In 15, the county commission trying to address this appointed a jail, jail reduction committee. That, that committee is fairly large and involves a lot of people from different departments through the county and the city. They did some work, but our population continued to grow. 2016, 20th January, 2017, I took office, as well as four brand-new county commissioners. And I didn't think the first thing I needed to do was bring them a new jail project is something that they needed to see. So I waited until they wanted to see me, and by October of 2017, they invited me over to explain why I'm spending all this money outside the county. So I gave them that presentation, and I made a recommendation that we hire a consultant to do the needs assessment like we did the first time around to see, see what we needed to put in place, which they did follow that recommendation. One of the things that the consultant did say that we should do is implement pre-trial services, and the county did implement pre-trial services at the recommendation of the consultant. The side note of that is he recommended we do that to get some of the inmates out of jail that couldn't afford to post bond, but they weren't a high-risk society. He also said that that's not going to fix your problem, but it will help with your population. You may lose 20 or 25 inmates, and you can kind of see by the average daily population between 18 and 19, our population did come down pretty close to 20 to 25 inmates. In 2019, at the recommendation of the consultant, we got an architect on board to look at conceptual services. We narrowed it down to four options, one being to do nothing, and what does that cost look like over 20 years? We looked at, in addition to the current facility, we looked at retaining the current facility and adding a facility somewhere else, and we looked at building a whole new sheriff's office and jail. And over the 20-year period, what, what, to everybody's kind of surprise, the cheapest from an operational standpoint is a new facility. They, and we also, in the late fall of 2019, we hired Turner Construction for CM@Risk services so they could give us a guaranteed maximum price for the jail and give us the pricing we needed to figure out, all those, those options that I mentioned. Fast forward to 2020, following the, those two or three years that the county commission had to, to look at this, study this problem that we've been dealing with, and we had town halls to accept some public input. The Board of County Commissions voted 5-0 to put the Greenfield facility on the November ballot. This is a, just a aerial diagram of what the Greenfield facility basically looks like. You've got the booking area. This would be the visitor's entrance, administrative offices, the break room and lockers. This would be the patrol facility, corrections office area up here. This is male and female mental health or special needs unit. This is a medical unit. This, this part would be the kitchen. This would be that programs piece that I'd discussed earlier with several places for programs that occur in the jail. And then these are housing units. An advantage, there's several advantages. We did this, we did a matrix like this with every one of those four facilities, or the three other options we looked at, and I'm not going to go through everything, but, but the things like availability of parking and construction time and all that. The only, the biggest negative, or the biggest red line that we had on this one was, what do we do with the facility we have now? Because it is a big facility, but the one thing that I can say is that the north central region of juvenile center is interested in the newer portion of the jail, possibly for a juvenile center. They've written us a letter of interest, and they've contacted the state to see if that's even a possibility, which they got a positive on that. But they're not willing to put any money or go forward with this till they know for sure that this is even an option. You know, they don't want to invest a bunch of time and effort till they know for sure. I talked about the facility. The target size is about 400 beds for 20 years is what the consultant thinks we need. This, this facility would be 392 beds. It addresses the needs I talked about earlier, being energy efficient. We would have to tire 42 additional full-time staff to staff this, and those numbers were included in that 20-year projection that we, that we put together. It does include new offices for patrol investigations and records, and I'd mentioned the regional detention facility's interest in it. $89,655,000 is the total project cost, and is guaranteed maximum price. It may be less depending on what's cost for site acquisition and how the final design comes out, but that's the guaranteed maximum price. That's the, that's why we went with the CM@Risk. Phil?
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. So just a few of the numbers, because I'm the numbers guy, so the sheriff likes to give me this part of the presentation, but the proposal that'll be on the November ballot is to increase the county's sales tax by half a percent for the term of the bonds that would be issued to pay off costs of construction of a new jail facility. As I'm sure you all know, because you're the biggest retail hub in the county, Saline County and the city of Salina are very fortunate to be a draw for folks from outside the community for retail shopping. And so approximately, just, just under 25% of the sales tax revenue that's generated in Saline County actually comes from residents of other counties. So that $6 million that we've been spending outside the community over the last 10 years, housing our inmates in other facilities, they get the opportunity, if this passes, to help us pay back some of that over the next period of time. So what does that mean? It's a 50-cent difference if you buy $100 in goods or services, or as the sheriff likes to stay, say, a nice $50 steak is a quarter extra. We expect that the sales tax will generate approximately $6 million annually in revenue, and we estimate that the project will be paid off in about 18 years. That's a pretty conservative estimate. Think it could be a little sooner than that, but that's the estimate from our financial advisor. And I think it's important to know that by law, the sales tax does end once the bonds are paid off. So that is something that folks are always interested in. And then those other numbers in that. other numbers in that middle column there are just some of the statistics around jail admissions, the number of transport trips, which you've already seen, and the age of the current jail. This is the language that will actually the actual text of the ballot question. I know it's a little hard to read on the screen, but this is not a confusing one. It's not one of those no means yes, yes means no kinds of things. If you support a new jail, you would check the yes box. If you oppose the new jail, you would check the no box. So pretty straightforward. The deadline to register to vote is coming up pretty soon, which is why we thank the city manager and the city commission for allowing us to be here. Went to encourage folks to go out and have the ability to make their voices heard. However, they have opinions on this particular issue. Election Day, of course, is Tuesday, November 3rd this year. And if folks have additional questions, we are have a particular page on our county website at saline.org that they can go on and they can actually sign up to receive updates. And I think the last slide is all you, Sheriff.
This was this was me and my two-year-old son at the time when the addition was open. So that's 1995. See what the sheriff's office does to you over the years. But if you've got some questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Just one, and my math is off. Mr. Scrag, would that put our city tax over 10%? I mean, the total tax bill?
It would not. The the base rate, the if you're in the downtown CID, it would be.
Okay, so we're what, 925 now?
Yes.
Okay. Something about that psychological 10%.
Right. Base rate would not. The downtown, whether you're in the downtown district with the 1% CID or in the alley or the hotel with the additional 1% would exceed that.
Any other questions for?
Sheriff, I just had one question. And that's the what does the breakdown of the daily population look like in terms of, you know, what the inmates are being housed for? Are they coming from municipal court? Are they? I mean, are they completing, you know, a sentence? I'm just kind of curious as to what what the what the breakdown looks like on those.
There are a percentage that come from municipal court. It's not. It's not large. What really ties up our days in the jail are the ones with more serious charges. And that's one thing we've seen through the years is the the number of inmates in jail for more serious crimes stay longer. I kind of I was trying to think of how to even bring that analysis to you and, you know, I kind of all I could think of was a car mechanic. If you go to your if you take your car to get the headlight replaced, you could do headlights pretty quick. If it needs an engine replaced, it takes a lot longer. There's a lot more planning goes in that. It's not any different for court cases. So they come in with a lot more charges and more serious charges. And the ones that are on misdemeanor crimes, they're just not in jail. Pretrial services has really helped with the ones, the low-hanging fruit, you know, that's kind of helped with that. But it's it's the severity of crimes that are keeping people in jail.
So like, these are are people who are awaiting trial then? Or they have been tried and they've been sentenced and they're serving their sentence?
If we have very few people sentenced to county jail right now.
Okay.
We have most of them are pretrial. Most of them are awaiting trial. Once they get once their their court is completed and they're waiting sentencing, as soon as we get someone as soon as we get someone sentenced and we can get that journal entry, they're gone. Well, that's the way it was till COVID came in. But it doesn't take us long at all. Once they're sentenced to get them out of our jail, it's the pretrial inmates that that tie up the most bed space. And that length of stay has has increased dramatically through the years. The average length of stay for someone, if you stay in jail for more than a day, that average length of stay has just grown and grown, but it goes back to the type of charges that they're in jail for.
What sort of really, I'm assuming the 89 million is just for the building. Is the county budget being increased to provide those extra services such as the mental health, the health, the reentry programs? Because those are obviously very important in long-term reducing your your numbers.
Yeah. So the sheriff, the sheriff's budget is increasing for 2021, and we will probably be increasing it for the next 20 years. For 2021, the sheriff asked for an additional program staff to help do some of the rehabilitation work. But as the sheriff mentioned, and I think it's important point to reiterate, the cost of operating a new completely brand-new facility on a new site is actually cheaper over a 20-year period than the cost of continuing to house folks out of county when you figure the the cost of the daily bed space and the cost of the transportation and so forth. So even with adding 42 new staff over that 20-year period, which of course, as you point out, would be a significant increase to the sheriff's base budget, even with that increase, it would be cheaper than the alternative.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is the 1% that you do receive now already committed to bonded projects?
The the county's current portion of the 1% sales tax that's countywide is just it goes into the general fund. And so it funds all of our general fund services, including the sheriff's office. We don't have any outstanding in the outstanding indebtedness other than a little piece for the Kip Sewer District that we're on the hook for, but that's paid by the the residents in that sewer district. So no general obligation outstanding indebtedness on the county at this time.
What about the mill levy as an option to?
So basically, we could go because counties are a little more restricted than cities in terms of doing general obligation debt. And so we would have to go to the voters if we did want to do a GO bond that was paid for by an increase in the mill levy. If we did do that, that would be outside the tax lid. So that could be done. However, then we would lose the opportunity to help garner that money from our friends and neighbors who come here to shop. So we think that the sales tax is a better option for the community than increasing the property tax.
Let me say, we certainly need it. And I wish you guys best of luck with with the vote on it because it's an asset we really need here in Saline County.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, with that, we'll move to 7.2.
Item 7.2, first reading ordinance number 20-11042, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Salina, Kansas and the State of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water distribution system.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. In 2010, the city commission approved $20 million to be debt financed for cast iron water main replacements. And with the proposed loan today, will be slightly over that $20 million figure for water line replacements. And we've been working on the water main replacements for over 10 years. And what we've learned is that we can do about 3.76 miles per year. And each mile costs about $540,000. And that relates to about $2 million a year. And as we move forward, the intention is to continue the water main replacement using cash on hand. And we schedule that to begin in 2021 at $2 million a year, which is currently what we've been accomplishing with our current staff and contractors. In February of 2020, the city commission authorized staff to complete and submit an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for water main replacements. I included a map in your report that shows where we've replaced mains over the last 10 years and the proposed lines to be replaced with this project. The loan has been approved for an amount of $4,250,000, which includes a contingency of $250,000. The loan is for a term of 20 years with an interest rate of 1.43% and an annual payment of $245,087 and some change. The process for receiving these this money is similar to what we have with a grant reimbursement. We expand the money and then we file for reimbursement from KDHE. We do have the opportunity to prepay all or a part of the loan at any time without penalty by giving KDHE 60 days' written notice. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires an ordinance be adopted and published in the official city newspaper. The executed loan agreement and the associated documents will then be submitted to Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Staff and legal counsel have reviewed the documents. The cost for the proposed loan of $4,250,000 is included in the 2020 through 2024 water and wastewater rate study. And it's includes $275,000 annually at a rate of 2.5%, which as you can see with the 1.43, we're at a slightly better rate and a lower annual payment of the $245,087 and change. Staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration. Option one, approve ordinance number 20-11042 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the State of Kansas. Or option two is postpone consideration of the ordinance to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments that the city commission would like to request. Or vote to deny ordinance and give staff further directions. Staff recommends option one. At this time, I'd be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I'll start down here.
Just one. Back in 2010, when we first approved this, we did authorize $20 million worth of project. And I know that this has not been done with revenue bonds. It's been done mostly with the Water Supply Loan Fund. The question is, since we're going to exceed that amount by a slight amount, I think about a quarter of a million dollars or 300,000, do we need to change that original authorization in any form? Or is would I know if it were a standard bond issue, you probably would have to change that legislation or amend that legislation to make it fit the project. Is that necessary in this case?
Boy, now, that's a question that I hadn't anticipated. Or do I have an answer for? But possibly, we may not exceed that. We have a contingency in here, which we typically put in.
Would cover that.
So the process.
It's probably a question for bond counsel, would be my guess. Because I think originally...
Run that by him.
As I recall, the original approval was done in the nature of authorizing revenue bonds in this amount, I think.
That's probably something you remember better than I do, Rod.
I think that's a homework item for us. I don't know that I know the answer to that.
And I may be misremembering. I just remember when that we did something. And at the time, I believe it was structured with the idea that these would be revenue bonds.
Yeah, and we've been definitely using the state revolving loan fund, low interest loan.
Which of course is a set of different rules.
Yes. So I'll work with Debbie to get an answer on that. And if we need to revise it, we'll have an opportunity to do that when we know what the final number will be.
And this is for $4 million, but you said we're doing about $2 million a year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So does this cover 2021 and '22?
Yes, it it'll get us started through those years. We held off on this slightly because of COVID and have held off for starting the project. So once we complete this, then we'll look at where we're at with the contractors for our next $2 million. And we may be adjusting the year that it appears in our water and sewer rates to drop it back a year, which I think some of our loan payments, that's going to occur to occur also as we've been reading the start dates for those. So we'll make some slight adjustments in our water rates. It's more about how we get our work done with our current staff and the local contractors. We try not to have more work than staff can manage and handle. It could slide.
I just did that. That prompts a question. So and maybe I misunderstood what you said. So we're anticipating a water rate increase to fund the payments on this project then? Or?
No, we already have included them in our water and sewer rates that we've been talking about for multiple years.
Long time.
Yes, for a long time.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, in fact, we should be better off because I can't imagine in 2010, we projected a 1.43% interest rate.
No, nor did we get one either. It was 2.632 in 2010. That was our highest rates. And then our last loan was at 1.66.
So?
The interest rates have came down, which is a good thing. We're getting more work done.
Yeah.
For our dollar.
Any other questions? Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick.
We approve ordinance number 2011042 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the State of Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve ordinance number 20-11042 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. That will lead us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 20-7877, authorizing the mayor to execute a communication system and services agreement and related documents with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for delivery, installation, ongoing maintenance, and asset management services related to emergency communications dispatch infrastructure, hardware and software, and portable and handheld communications radios.
Mr. Scrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. With that title, that about concludes my report. And I wrote it. This is the culmination of years of effort and a lot of effort on people's part other than myself. And and I'm sure you know some of this history, but I'll try to touch on it briefly. I don't even know when narrowbanding started, but we started to have a conversation about narrowbanding and the condition of the the city and county's emergency radio communication system in 2017. And so as a collaborative effort, we we have an E-911 committee that receives 911 funds that are collected on the phone bill. So as a collaborative effort, we entered into an agreement with TUSA Consulting Services to assist the city and the county with the design of a system, as well as a request for proposal process and implementation of a system if it were chosen. So that process has been ongoing. Most recently, then, in August of this year, the city and county commission conducted a joint meeting. And you heard a report from staff and from TUSA regarding next steps associated with the the radio communication project. At that time, the the RFPs have been conducted and they were able to report out and recommend entering into further negotiation with two vendors, which was a little unusual. The RFPs were structured in a way with the intention of identifying a vendor to enter into negotiations with singly. But they were so close that they recommended we enter into negotiations with L3 Harris and Motorola. The two commissions concurred with that recommendation and directed that staff complete that process. So September 8th of this year, there's another joint meeting, the two commissions. And at that time, reporters provided as well as a recommendation to go with Motorola. And the county commission provided a initial motion and vote recommending that staff proceed with negotiations with Motorola. And you concurred with that recommendation as the city commission. So that process then kicked off from September 8th to the present. You may recall that there was a discount identified if an agreement was entered into before September 25th. So that kind of motivated all the parties to complete the negotiations of the contract. A lot of that was incorporation of the RFPs. We talked quite a bit in as part of the study session and otherwise, that we divided up responsibility for the system to the county, taking the primary responsibility for the bulk of the system, anything that served the county in its entirety. So the backbone, the antennas, the communication system itself. We previously indicated to you that we have an ongoing agreement with the county where they operate the jail. We operate dispatch services. We do fingerprinting services. But the point of that is the agreement provides that the city accepts responsibility for countywide dispatching services. So our approach was that the city would pick up the costs associated with dispatch, as well as costs associated with emergency communication radios, whether that be handhelds or portables. or portables, for all of our employees. So, that fire, EMS, police, utilities, and animal services. So, part of the number estimating that's been going on all along, at the very early outset, county staff provided an estimate of what they thought the city's share might be. And that was the basis of us budgeting $3.5 million in this year's budget. And I tried to be very mindful of saying that was, you know, a very rough estimate. It was gracious of the county to offer that up, but it was not a binding commitment until we got through this process, got through negotiations. We really didn't know what that number might be. At the September 9th study session, we shared numbers with you, and that was based on staff's preliminary efforts to divide those costs out, as I described, for the different sources. And then subsequently, Motorola took a closer look and detailed those. And we actually saw a little bit of a financial benefit by Motorola characterizing the uses of some of those equipment as being system-wide rather than dedicated to dispatch. So, in the blue sheet is the revised cost breakdown. That's the result of those efforts. And the county commission has seen and concurred with those numbers. So, I guess getting right to the point, the city of Salina numbers, there's an upfront investment component that applies to the infrastructure that'll need to be installed, as well as the subscriber radios and performance bonding as part of the contract. So, those upfront costs are $2,388,490.84. Then there are also ongoing costs. And you may recall, as we talked about the cost of the system, TUSA always talked about the 15-year lifecycle cost of the system. So, in addition to that upfront investment, they provided for maintenance costs, third-party maintenance, wave subscription, which doesn't apply to the city, and I can touch on that in a minute. And then asset management services, as well as application of some discounts. And so, the subtotal of that, those ongoing costs is $1,429,659.48. So, as I mentioned, the 2.4 million upfront investment would be the infrastructure and the investment that needs to be made upfront. The remainder will be ongoing annual costs. And you may notice that there's different years there. Some of the maintenance costs begin in year four, some begin in year two. And that just corresponds to the warranties that come with the applicable items that the maintenance costs don't pick up till the warranty expires. So, city total cost is $3,818,000. There, there's a couple of footnotes there on the table. I mentioned that I would touch on the wave subscription. That is a kind of a push-to-talk technology for telephones. The county is going to take the lead in that and then offer that service to the city and others. So, we can opt in at a later point at additional cost. But it is something that we are not committed to at this point and a decision point that we could address somewhere out in the future. So, the county is on board with those costs, and we're trying to complete the contract transaction on the timeline, the goal of September 25th. I took the liberty of not attaching these over 700-page document to the packet. I did provide you a link, so maybe some of you went out and took a look at the link and read that in detail. I would tell you that I would be remiss of not giving credit for the staff that really worked this through, and I'm going to miss some. But Hannah Stanbaugh, on behalf of the county, has kind of taken the lead in this process. Wayne Pruitt, emergency communications director, has been our representative and point of contact, along with Captain Forrester. We also had staff from the fire department that are actively involved as we reviewed the proposals and vetted the responses to the RFPs. So, there is countless time and effort put into reviewing this document, and it still was a lot of push on the part of Clark Meisenwindle and the county legal counsel to turn all those conversations into this contract document. Having said that, there were a couple of clarifications that were resolved between the packet going out on Thursday and today, and we'll touch on those in a minute. So, we, at your dais, you should have a resolution, and the resolution has been modified to identify the changes that were made. And I'll ask Greg to touch on them here in a minute, and I assure you, they're riveting. You're the only one that got that. They are important, I will say that. So, with respect to the fiscal note, we initially estimated the cost at $3.5 million, and we budgeted for that in this year's budget. And we budgeted that as essentially an annual debt service of the full $3.5 million. With it being more in the 2.4 million, that obviously gives us sufficient funds to fund the project at the outset. And those additional savings are available for us to apply towards those annual maintenance costs. A couple of things that we've talked about and that we'll continue to work on are just cost savings that we're able to realize in our annual operations, everything from repairing and replacing equipment that'll now be under warranty and have a maintenance plan, as well as E911 funds. The fees have gone up, which generates a little bit of additional revenue. So, I think some of the city and the county's expenses, annual expenses, may be eligible for reimbursement of the E911 funds. So, we'll take a look at those as well. But there's sufficient funds to cover the initial investment. I think there's sufficient funds on an annual basis to cover the annual maintenance. And if we can find some of those cost savings in annual expenses in E91, we'll certainly target those. So, with that, I guess, the, I mentioned the $500,000 pricing discount that for September 25th, we're targeting that, and that's factored into these numbers as well. I'll run through the options real quick, and then I'll ask Greg to walk you through some of the revisions that occurred since the time the packet went out on Thursday. You could approve resolution 207877, authorizing the mayor to execute a communication systems and services agreement and the related documents with Motorola Systems for delivery, installation, ongoing maintenance, and asset management services related to emergency communications dispatch, infrastructure, hardware and software, and communications, portable and handheld radios. You could approve it with amendments. Depending on those amendments, those might take on further negotiation with Motorola and could jeopardize the September 25th target date. If that were the action that you chose, we'd probably need to consider a special meeting to try to accommodate that timeline. And I should say, it may also involve ongoing conversations with the county to kind of rectify all that. You could postpone consideration, but again, that September 25th date is looming. So, if you did wish to postpone it and ask for additional information, we'd ask you to be mindful of the September 25th date. You could vote to deny the resolution and provide further direction. That would essentially leave the city and the county potentially at impasse. And, you know, one point that we've been stressing all along is kind of the condition of the infrastructure and the system itself, as well as the narrowbanding deadline. So, this, as I've said, is kind of the culmination of trying to resolve that. If we choose not to go forward, that would be a significant setback, and I don't know what the ramifications of that might be. With that, I would like to give the city legal counsel the opportunity to walk you through the resolution that's on the dais and the changes that took place in the agreement. I shouldn't say changes, the clarifications that took place in the agreement from packet distribution to today.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You all, I'm sure, are very familiar with the RFP that began the formal part of this process. As you think of it, we'll now refer to it as Motorola's Solicitation Response. That's the status that their response to the RFP takes on. And as you saw, that is a significant portion of the documentation of the agreement. We knew when we were asked, I was asked, and County Councilor Mike Montoya was asked to begin our work on those documents, that it was going to be critical, or certainly key, that the city and county be in tandem in terms of our negotiating position as we worked out those details under the contract. And I can assure you that we were every step of the way, and I certainly appreciate the chance to work with Mike Montoya on that, as well as with Hannah's support, and of course, Wayne Pruitt and Captain Forrester from the city's standpoint. And I think it went well, and certainly Motorola was very cooperative as we worked through details. We did work through, the contracts, if you will, were embedded as a section in the response to the RFP. So, as those were negotiated and changes were made, the actual, the model that was chosen was to split that, so to speak, so that the city would have its contract and the county would have its contract. Many parallels, but they were distinctive. That was the last step before packet went out on Thursday, and that was receiving from Motorola how they had split the, what we're now talking about is Motorola Solicitation Response, one for the city and one for the county. And that's what they provided. Now, of course, that did take a little bit further review. That's what prompted the change in your resolution. You'll see, first of all, one of the keys for us is, given the greater level of detail in that Motorola Solicitation Response, over the negotiated contracts, the actual contract documents, we needed to be sure that it was clear that those took precedent. That language was in the original version, but we felt like it was important that that be identified very specifically as the city's response and agreed upon date, September 17, 2020. And to provide, as you might imagine, in that RFP, it was anticipated at that point that the county would be the contracting entity. So, as the RFP was split out, Motorola did, I think, a good job of modifying their response to correspond with the city contract. But we were left with language referring only to the county in what was a carryover from the original RFP language. So, that additional language, we suggested and Motorola agreed to, was as you see there in their subpoint one in section one of the resolution, that makes it clear that any of those references to the county, when there's, when in the context of the document, we're speaking of the contracting party, that that reference is to the city. The second point you see, it was recognized in the review after the response was received on Thursday, that one thing that did need to be updated, there had been earlier in the process negotiations with Motorola as to applicable liquidated damages in the event of unexcused delays. That, the results of those negotiations had not been included in the response as it was presented on Thursday. When we noted that, they quickly provided what were the actual terms as negotiated. And those have been substituted in Motorola's Solicitation Response, both for the city and for the county. So, that's what prompts point two under section one, as far as the change from Thursday's version. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I was remiss, and I called out some of the people that were contributing, but most of them are here. Hannah Stanbaugh, Philip Smith Haynes, Wayne Pruitt, Captain Forrester, and representatives of Motorola. So, between that group of people, hopefully, we can try to answer any questions you might have.
Commission, any questions? Comments from the public? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve resolution number 20-7877.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7877, authorizing the mayor to execute a communication system and services agreement and related documents with Motorola Solutions, Inc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And I would like to thank all parties again for their diligence on this, and Hannah, for your leadership. I know you didn't have anything else going on with COVID or anything, so, so, seen your name a lot here lately. So, thank you for, and again, to the city staff for all their work on this also. Okay, we have no development business. Do any of the commissioners have anything to bring before the commission under other business?
In regards, the study session we had this afternoon certainly was a much larger turnout than I anticipated. And there were several comments referencing the inaccessibility of that time of the day for a lot of working people. And I think someone rather politically correctly said that a lot of the persons who might have issues or be personally affected by the topic being discussed were the very people who would not be able to attend a meeting at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Monday. So, what I would suggest is that we have a, really for lack of a better, just a repeat of today's session in an evening time that might be accessible for those who do work during the day.
I would really appreciate that and expressed it in the meeting. I think that, you know, we had kind of indicated we were going, well, not kind of, we had indicated that we were going to afford that opportunity to folks, and I would, I would like to follow through on that.
One of the things that we are trying to achieve is transparency. And I think if we're not even, if we're not transparent with the process by which we discuss the issue of transparency, well, we're really getting off to a bad start. And, you know, no guarantee that a totally different set of people will show up, but at least there will be an opportunity. I, we'll leave it up, you know, I'm just guessing, 7:00 and pick the day of the week that obviously won't be Monday, but.
I was about to ask, what time did we have the meeting at Sam's Chapel?
Six, I thought.
It was at 6:00 in the evening.
I think so.
I honestly don't remember. I think that.
Well, yeah.
Six to eight, I think, yeah, was what it is.
Yeah. So, I mean, if the other commissioners agree, whatever time, lead time you need to arrange something like that.
Do we have a consensus?
Same facility? I mean, the Tonys, T-PAC this time? Or?
Tonys, I don't believe, was able to accommodate us the last time, but they had social distancing in place today. I think they, it worked out well. We could certainly do that again there.
And I'm fine with that, but, and it'll bring me to my next topic concerning face masks and social distancing. But would we really say that people were compliant with face masks and social distancing in that setting? Because maybe I was looking at a different crowd than you were, but I saw fully 25% to 30% of the people were not masked, and most people were sitting shoulder to shoulder. So, I think that's something that we might want to consider in the future when we, if we do hold another session, even if it's either spacing the chairs or marking every other chair off. I mean, if people aren't going to, in a study session on law enforcement, if people aren't going to respect the ordinance, I mean, I guess that we just have to do something else.
We can certainly space the chairs like we have here, and enforcing masks becomes an issue of medical necessity or medical exemption. And I don't know that we've been in the practice of requiring proof of that, but I understand your point.
So, we have a request to have a meeting at either 6:00 or 7:00 at T-PAC, and you would like to see the presentation given again by, by the chief.
At first, I was going to say, just give a summary, but for those who really have not heard it, and it's not a, it's not a very long presentation, it's easy to follow. Ask the chief if he can indulge hearing himself repeat it again.
I guess we would ask staff to give us a couple of dates.
Sure, we can check Tonys availability. You can leave a little bit of lead time so people can anticipate it and get back with you with some dates.
Any other business?
I think that, and I'm glad that Ms. Stanbaugh is still here, but I guess I'm growing increasingly frustrated with people's lack of compliance with both the city masking ordinance and the county masking ordinance. And I understand that people are claiming medical exemptions, but I have yet to hear from a physician, particularly a pulmonologist, or anybody who has expertise in breathing treatments, and be able to state that there is a legitimate reason for medically exempting oneself from the mask requirement. So, understanding that there may be an outlier in the people who were not wearing masks today, I really would, and I don't know what to do. It's been made very clear. It's been made very clear by law enforcement and that we're not going to enforce this. So, even though we've implemented an ordinance and we've set up a fine schedule, you know, and it puts law enforcement in a difficult position to enforce it, and we knew that going in, but if we really want to make a difference, and we think that this is a way to bring down the numbers in Salina, I think we've got to start getting more serious about either ticketing individuals, ticketing businesses, because we're just not getting it done. And I guess I'm just mainly expressing frustration at this point. I'm open to suggestions from...
You know, I would make a personal observation, as today is the worst I've seen.
Yeah.
Most of the places I've been, and maybe I'm in unusual places, I would say, compliance is running at 90, 95%. It's actually pretty good, bearing in mind that if you're more than six feet from somebody and can maintain that distance, you're in compliance anyway. I've been in a few places where people, I saw one or two people who weren't masked, but, you know, they were on the other side of the store, and it was an empty place. So, you know, but I think by and large, the places I've been where there have been lots of people, most people, an overwhelming majority, have been masked, so I'm not sure that compliance is a general problem, but today, it was noticeable that there were quite a number of people who were simply, you know, I don't want to say noncompliant, but they weren't wearing masks for whatever reason, and that's a matter of concern.
Well, in young kids, we call it oppositional defiant disorder, and I think adults manifest the same behavior that our kids do, and it's probably not coincidental. I guess folks who have the privilege of not having to experience someone close to them get sick or die have a less serious approach to this, and it's one of those unfortunate that you'd never wish it on anybody, but it's something you can't undo once it happens.
If your concern is this past event and the future event, we can stay, we can have a supply of masks. I mean, I think everybody knows it's an issue now, but we can have a supply of masks, and we can pull them at the door, and I think we're one step short of saying, we need a doctor's note, but we could confront them.
I think we had masks at the...
The Sam's Chapel.
Yeah, we did. There were.
That was a little bit earlier on, when we weren't sure everybody would have a mask or, but we certainly can do that again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am open to suggestions from, from the expert in the room.
I do have one other item. I don't want to change subjects prematurely, but I've got one when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Franz pointed out in the CIM that was in today's packet that we had references to parts per billion and parts per million in that report, and to his credit, he picked up the relationship of parts per million and billion, and that was incorrect. We stated the threshold from EDA and KDHE is parts per billion, and we stated our results in parts per million, which made it appear that we were noncompliant, when in fact, all of our results should have been in parts per billion as well. So, I don't know if you've got a revised copy there, but we've also posted a revised copy on the city's website.
There's a red line copy at the place.
We're going to go ahead and post the red lines on the city's website so they can see what changed as well. Just a clarification, as it was reported, incorrectly made it appear as if we were noncompliant, when that was not the intent of that entire memo.
Anything else? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see everyone next week.